I am going to call our meeting to order. Our June 21st, actually my mother's birthday, June 21st, first day of summer.
Happy birthday.
Yep. Call the meeting to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Viscarra?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Pulten Man?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist?
Thank you. Would you please stand for the invocation?
Dear Lord, I pray that you bless us in this meeting and keep us, Lord. Make your face shine on us and be gracious to us. I pray that we fill your presence during this meeting because you are with us wherever we go. I pray that this meeting focuses upon you and your plans for us as a body of believers. I'd also like to keep the families in all of our prayers of our neighboring public safety officers from El Monte. And, Lord, if you keep the community, their families, the residents, everyone that knew them, in all of our prayers, so that this will be a much less burden than they are experiencing currently. We pray to the Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, and let's have our public safety officer, Ed Champ, lead us in our, I'm not, our deputy lead us. Sorry.
All these rise, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. The pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I do want to share with the public that our city council sent a letter that we all signed this evening to the city of El Monte offering our condolences on the fallen officers. Okay, we move to item four. Thank you, Ed. We move to item four, our five ceremonial matters. A Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Update, and Peter is here. Welcome, Peter.
Good evening, Mayor Sternquist, city council, city staff, Temple Cityans. I'm Peter Choi with the Chamber's Quarterly Report. June 2022, as we hover somewhere between a pandemic and an endemic and keep an eye on the fluctuating COVID numbers while taking comfort in the dropping of corresponding hospitalization and ICU numbers, the Chamber continues to support and promote the Temple City business community while maintaining vigilance in promoting appropriate health measures for public safety. Just today, I had a last-minute cancellation of a Chamber meeting guest because due to their getting COVID and quarantining. It happened just today, a few hours ago. So the COVID pandemic remains very real and present. Nonetheless, the Chamber has been engaging more and more and attending more and more events as our economy continues to open up. Certainly here in Temple City, the signs of life are many, including the Chamber's grand openings and ribbon cuttings. As I always say, we appreciate these entrepreneurs who have chosen to invest here in Temple City. Like our grand opening just last week for Yi Home Appliances, that's Yi-Yi, Yi Home Appliances, last week on Las Tunas. The Chamber's economic development message is that our city is a great place to do business as we are smack dab in the center of the SGV. Equidistant from the 10 and the 210, mid-commute from Alhambra and Monterey Park to Azusa and Duarte. Just like real estate, it's location, location, location. And as I said to Serena Hahn, the small business owner of Yi Home Appliances, Temple City is not just smack dab in the center of the SGV, we are the heart of the SGV. And that's why it's a great place to do business. So we thank and congratulate the new businesses bringing life and activity to our community. Paul Quo, the owner and founder of Pop Rock Academy. And these are the new members who have joined in the last quarter. Renee Rowe of Devil and Angel Dessert Shop in Camellia Square. Serena Hahn, again, of Yi Home Appliances at 9233 Las Tunas. This Friday, we have a grand opening for Camellia Dentistry at 5728 Rosemead Boulevard. And Dr. Ethan Park, we hope to see some of you there. Other new member businesses that have opened this quarter without any grand opening celebration. Insight Digestive Healthcare with Diane Nguyen. Samantha Chang and Hoya Insurance Agency. Faith Hope and Chinese Outreach. And Dr. Jeffrey Shu of Smile Again Proodontics. Even though they did not choose to have a public grand opening, we have supported and promoted because as the business saying goes, you have one chance to make a first impression. And our efforts are always on introducing them to the community and giving them the best first impression. Part of our work for the business community is working with regional entities like the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership. This quarter, I accepted an invitation to join the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership's Marketing Committee. The Marketing Committee promotes the economic and cultural health of the region with projects like building web presence for the region, publishing the first region-wide dining guide, working towards massive investment in the region, and more. I attended my first meeting. I have some ideas. And you can rest assured that any ideas I bring to the Marketing Committee will be ones that really help and focus our businesses here first and foremost. The Temple City Chamber of Commerce was proud to continue our tradition of supporting and promoting the 78th Camellia Festival and Parade, including printing 100 extra copies of the June Temple City Life Commemorative Issue for Executive Director Don Tarran. The Temple City Life was, of course, included in much of the stuff that they handed out, and we were delighted to work with them. We congratulate Don Tarran, the General Chairman, all the volunteers, city staff, especially Parks and Rec and Community Development, and all the volunteers who made this event such a success, not just in 2022, but also for the roller coaster ride of finessing the virtual parader in the pandemic. We're very impressed by Don and their team, and it was great to work with them every step of the way. The Chamber was delighted to host a 2022 Camellia Royal Court at Devil and Angel Dessert Bar on May 16. You know, we used to have them come to visit the board when they would go out and visit the community. The Camellia Royal Court used to come to the Chamber Board Room and meet the board here. This year, because of the pandemic, of course, we chose to host them instead at Devil and Angel Dessert Bar. Everyone who attended, young and old, got their choice of an ice cream treat. And this worked out really well, and I think this is how we will be hosting them in the future. It's just one of these pandemic adjustments that become a new way of doing things. There are things that we learned during the pandemic that we bring here, like Zoom board meetings, Zoom seminars, in addition to the in-person things that we're embracing again.
Peter, so Devil and Angel, do they have donuts?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
They have donuts and-
You gotta get over there.
Frozen ice cream treats.
All right. Donuts.
Summer's here. So thanks to Board Chair Melissa Demercy and TransTech Engineers for sponsoring a very fun afternoon. The kids loved it, and they're so cute. Summer's here. Get your gourmet ice cream treats at Devil and Angel in Camellia Square. We continued our monthly Zoom seminars. In April, we partnered with SGV COG, Council of Governments, I mean, are you familiar with, on energy efficiency incentives for property owners. In May, we partnered with Ramp, which is the regional alliance marketplace for procurement. It's a one-stop hub where businesses can sign up for vendor opportunities with multiple companies' events like the Olympics. My question when I attended that seminar about Ramp was, Temple City, you know, has a very specific business community. So for instance, in Temple City, if there is a mom-and-pop Mexican restaurant, El Ruiz Senor Grill, that also does catering, would it benefit that mom-and-pop Mexican restaurant to sign up for Ramp? And the answer was a very loud yes, yes. And so we encourage all businesses, anyone who may hear, we continue to get word out. If you're curious about it, you want to find out about vendor possibilities, there are big events between now and leading up to the Olympics. You hear about soccer championships, you hear about Grammy Awards. When they do these events, they have different events in LA County. And if you're on the list of approved vendors, you can be called to supply anything from uniforms to food to security to haircuts in the Olympic Village. Who knows? We encourage everyone to sign up. You lose nothing by signing up. And if it can work for El Ruiz Senor Grill, then it can possibly work for your business as well. You don't have to be a big Hilton Hotel to sign up. Our next seminar, oh, June 7th, we did a seminar on the Responsible Beverage Service Training Act, which is effective July 1st, from the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. California Assembly Bill 1221 mandates training for anyone serving alcoholic drinks, including servers and managers, goes into effect July 1st. We had that seminar. We've been getting that information out. We proactively invited all our restaurant members to attend, and if they couldn't attend, to be aware of this new bill. That was June. And in July, coming up, our next seminar will probably likely be Reporting Unclaimed Property: What Businesses Need to Know, with a speaker from the Office of State Controller Betty Yee, from the Unclaimed Property Division. It helps businesses reunite with unclaimed property. Property is not just physical property. It includes uncashed checks, wages, safe deposit box holdings, et cetera. So stay tuned, read the Temple City paper, or contact the Chamber office. Other upcoming events, and as I finish, just one final announcement. The First United Methodist Church of Temple City is celebrating its 112th anniversary on June 26th with celebration service and activities beginning at 9:30 on June 26th. Very quickly, in 1908, 30 people gathered for Sunday worship in South Santa Anita School, now Longdon. Three years later, they had built their first church at the corner of Lemon and Golden West Avenues. It was the only church in the area, and it catered to 14 different denominations, named the Temple Community Church, Methodist Episcopal. Since then, new buildings have been added, the Sanctuary Building dedicated in 1925. The present sanctuary, shaped like Noah's Ark, was built in 1957. In 1962, St. Paul's Methodist Church merged to form First Methodist Church of Temple City, with the final name changed to today's First United Methodist Church of Temple City. So they extended invitation to all who would like to attend, especially former pastors, members, and their families who have crossed paths or worshipped at First United Methodist Church. June 26th, beginning at 9:30 a.m. It's located at 5957 Golden West Avenue, right here. And with that announcement, I end the Chamber report.
And that's a Sunday, right?
I'm not sure of the day.
It's 24.
Probably, though, because it's a service. So they're mixing business with pleasure, I think, here.
I wonder if Pastor Palmer will be there.
I know. I would like to see him again, but-
Yeah, we haven't seen him in a long time. It'd be nice to see him.
Okay. Anything else, Peter?
No.
It's like you seem so distant to two glasses, you know, two frames.
It's like a funhouse looking at you.
Yeah, it's just blurry. But anyway, does anyone have any questions for Peter? Okay, thank you, Peter.
Great, great, yes.
What time does Devil and Angel open in the morning? Do you know?
I do not know.
Later in the day. I'll go find out.
Later enough so you can still stop at Rose Donuts first.
I was gonna say-
Stop at Rose Donuts at 6:00 a.m.?
Rose Donuts in the morning, though.
That's right.
And then Devil Angel may be on the way home.
That's right. That's correct.
Yeah, but do they have coffee?
No, but there is-
I take my donuts to go anyway, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, Tom will look really nice with a sesame straight cookie monster donut.
Oh, yeah.
That's their, one of their top sellers.
Okay, I'll try that.
Matcha for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. All right, we move to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. And I believe I have one public comment from Jamie Tsai. Jamie? Come up to the podium, Jamie. And Jamie has some questions regarding senior activities. Welcome, Jamie.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and guests and Temple City residents. I live in Temple City since 199-
Pull the mic up a little bit so we can hear you.
Okay.
Or just push it up a little bit. Yeah.
Okay. I live in Temple City since 1995. The city is great. It's good for people with kids to go to school, you know. So today, most of my kids are already graduated, and they finished their colleges. So I'm happy to have that live of City Park because that's where my kids grew up and play with. What I'm saying is that some of my Temple City senior citizens, they're wondering if any activities should be open for us again. I think two, three years ago, we used to eat senior lunch in that area. And now, some of them have to go to Arcadia if they want to go. And they were asking me if I know anything about this. Okay, if I have time, I come to the council and ask if anything being planned, you know. Since, because next week is gonna be middle, end of the, middle of the year already. That's why I decided to come here and see if anything, you guys plan to do anything, so.
Well, thank you for coming. Brian, our senior lunches are still not happening at the park?
That's correct, but we are, Mr. Matsumoto can talk to Mr. Tsai and kind of give him an update as to what things we're gearing up for over the next few weeks and few months. And also to our, as you know, we have a senior master committee as well, that if he'd like to get involved with that as well, we more than welcome his participation in that. So I don't mind, if you don't mind, I'll have Mr. Matsumoto touch base with him.
Okay, thank you. Adam?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I don't have any others, so we are going to close public comment and move to the consent calendar.
Mayor Sternquist, one item on the consent calendar that I just want to point out is Measure H related to where we're going out to bid on with the roads. You did have a corresponding item at your last meeting related to SB 1 money. That was, that's gonna allow the funding for this project. So usually those, next time, we may put those two items together if we have a project from a timing standpoint. But I just wanted to note that your last meeting, you had SB 1 resolution that noted the funding for this project, and now this is the actual project. So next year, we'll try, if we have the timing, we'll try to conjoin those two together.
Okay.
You said Measure H, you meant Item H, right?
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Item H, yes.
Yeah, I was looking for Measure, too.
I was, too.
Sorry, Measure.
Okay, so Item H is the one that you just went to.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second?
Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pulten Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, we move to item eight, public hearing, adoption of resolution number 22-5603, approving-
Mayor, there is a request to move up item 10A before the, before the public hearings on the budget, if that's the pleasure of the council.
I don't see that, but you want to move item?
That was, that was a request to have that moved up.
Okay.
10A, the new business.
New business.
New business, oh. Anyway, it's, let's do it.
All righty, 10, 10A. Clerk, do you mind just reading the title of the item? Madam Clerk?
New Business 10A, Preliminary Discussion on Commercial Employee Permit Parking in Downtown Area Public Parking Lots.
Mayor Sternquist, if it's okay, if to continue?
Yeah, just let me get organized on this agenda first. So we're gonna do this now. Okay.
Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
All right. And that's you, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, and members of the council. Sorry for the, sorry for my confusion there. My apologies. So related to parking, I always think of the old phrase, whiskeys for drinking and waters for fighting, kind of with parking, too, at times. It becomes a very difficult issue to address. But with that going forward, before you tonight is a preliminary discussion and a request for feedback and staff direction on a potential commercial employee parking program. We have some analysis or some suggestions that we have for you and some options that, for discussion tonight. But generally speaking, the, in 2019, before the pandemic, the city had contracted out with the Transpo Group, a national firm that deals with parking and public parking issues throughout the country, and did a pretty thorough analysis of the demands and times related to that. Prior to the 2019 study, the council back in 2012 had contracted out with another consulting group, well-known RBF Consulting, to do analysis of the downtown parking demands, supply, and parking behavior throughout, throughout the downtown area. And we're thinking of the downtown area, I would point to the, to the map that kind of delineates out where the downtown area is. And that's generally, the boundaries we're talking about is between Kaufman and Cloverly, east and west, and Woodruff and Workman, north and south. And that's kind of the downtown core area that we talk. That downtown core area represents the vast majority of our public parking in our commercial area that is publicly owned lots. There is a mixture of commercial-owned lots and publicly owned lots, but the vast majority in that downtown core are public, are public lots. Approximately, and if you don't count for on-street parking, there's about 450, 470, 457 public parking lots within our parking structure. So onsite parking, not off-street parking. Off-street parking restrictions are not as restrictive as the on-street parking, excuse me, onsite parking that we have as public parking. That study showed, you know, levels of demand and peak demand in that area, issues related to turnover, issues related to usage. And I, we did, as, as just a point of reference, not to necessarily go through thoroughly tonight, is the 2019 study. And it showed where peak demand is throughout some of the public parking lots, and it showed where peak demand and where the low points are in terms of occupied parking spaces, when they're occupied, how long they're occupied. Now, it is a point-in-time study from when they did that, but, and that was pre-pandemic, with maybe some levels of behavior changing over time. We'd have to do another study to really understand what, how that behavior has changed since 2019. So the parking study did talk about employee parking throughout the area and some of the concerns and demands. And as you know, as we've talked about several times over the years, we do receive some complaints, in particular from businesses that are at the corner of Temple City Boulevard and Las Tunas. If the bank, an escrow company, and a restaurant in particular have been the usual folks who've complained about employee parking not being very close. The bank is now, SBC Bank is now gone, so that property is now vacant. But the escrow company and some of the restaurants in the area have remained. So before you, a few options to discuss. As staff, we do, if the council were to consider creating designated employee parking, if the council were to consider it, the option that would seem to be, at least from staff's perspective, the easiest to implement, but there are other considerations as well to think about with this program, would be a permit parking program, and I'll describe that very briefly. But going back to what some of the options that the council could consider, one of which is designating employee, a specific employee parking area within some, all, or just a few of the parking lots. The concern that, and creating a fee structure with that. One of the, something to note would be, one, that that would remove parking for any other parking other than employee parking. The other issue, and this is similar throughout all the options that we, as part of a discussion tonight, we would want to get some feedback from the council on, was if we were to consider that approach, we would need to, the city would need to look at, to formulate a percentage of the, of the spaces, not only in the entire inventory of all the parking, public parking spaces, but also look at it within certain geographic areas as well, which would, which could be a bit complicated. The other one, the second option would be simply employee permit, parking permits. Businesses could purchase a limited number of parking permits for their employees, and the employees would be able to park in any parking lot with no time restrictions other than the overnight restrictions. But no parking spaces would ever be dedicated. So in comparison to option two, where there would be dedicated spaces, there would be no dedicated spaces in this case. So it would be first come, first served.
Mayor, may I ask a clarification question?
Yes.
You mean they can park anywhere, including two-hour parking, they can park all day?
That would, that could be one option to consider, but there are, but there, the idea behind that, too, though, is the two-hour parking area was the idea is there is turnover for that, for, that's closer to the businesses. But that would be, that would be one option to, that would be out there.
But at the end of the day, isn't that the competing interest that we're really looking at here? Is that we have some businesses who would prefer the two-hour parking because of the turnover, especially the restaurants, yet we have some businesses who would prefer unlimited parking because they want their employees to be able to park there for eight to 10 hours a day without having to move their car.
That, that is a concern that's there, but-
That seems to me, at the end of the day, the two competing factors here.
That, those are competing interests, for sure. One of the approaches to think about if, if the council were to consider a employee parking permit program would be a couple of things. One, the amount of permits that would be issued and as either a percentage of the total inventory, and if you would want to do that incrementally. So that you say, say, for example, of the 457 spaces, you would want to, you know, ultimately have up to 20% of those allowed as permits, so you'd allow 80. Maybe what the council may want to consider is maybe you start at like 5% of all the available spaces. So that would be maybe 20, 20 spaces, or 10, or 10%, so that you would move up, see what the demand looked like over time, see how strong that demand is, see the potential impacts of what that would look like over time, rather than kind of going all in at once, kind of moving that incrementally over time.
But then would you also want to look at how many will be allowed per business? And will the amount of employees be taken into account? Because obviously, if you have a business that has three employees versus a business that has 50 employees, you're gonna, you have to work out some kind of fair arrangement as far as the issuance of those permits.
At least, at least, again, this is a preliminary discussion.
No, well, I mean, those are the kind of things that I would-
Understood.
Maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. You're not asking for comments yet, but, yeah, that's what comes through my mind.
Right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, and we would look at that, you know, would that be first come, first served? Those kind of things would be, things we would have to kind of flesh out. The other issue would be price, and price would play into all of these options that I, that staff is, or the three options that staff is showing you. Your other option is obviously maintaining the current parking time limits and no changes at all. But one of the, one of the factors would be-
Brian, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Sorry, Mayor. So going back to, you were referring to this incremental implementation, so-
Sure.
I guess is that just another way of saying it could be like a pilot program that we try?
That's another probably maybe straight, more straightforward way of saying it, that it would be, that you could do a pilot program, and we could kind of set the parameters that maybe we go up, maybe go up in increments. So you'd start at 5% of the, of the overall parking, 10, and see, and we would report back to council and see how that was working and what impacts and any adverse impacts or positive impacts we were seeing.
Well, and at the same time, also, if there is not a need or a call for it, maybe not move it or leave the percentage the same. Works both ways, I think.
Yeah. Did that answer your question, sir? Yes, yes, thank you. Great. The other, the other aspect of all three of these options is price. Now, currently, just, just as a point of reference, you do charge, the city charges $85 for a yearly residential permit. This is a little bit different in terms of what you're providing because you're actually providing, you're providing an asset to the business in this case. So your price is not necessarily set on cost recovery or cost recovery of the program. You could set this price based on market conditions. You could set this price a little bit differently. So you're not necessarily stuck with that. So that's another consideration. So, that's another consideration that you have with option two. Option three is similar to option one, where you would designate spaces. But again, part of that would be, of the 457 off-street parking spaces, we'd have to consider what approach we would take. Would we formulate a percentage of spaces for the entire inventory? How much would you set, those kind of things? And then the fourth option, as always for the council, is maintaining the current standards that you have right now. In terms of the three options, at least the most immediate and quickest option, if the council was to consider instituting an employee parking program, would be option two, for some of the reasons I described to you. We could essentially do, it would be easier to do pilot programming for that. We wouldn't be putting out new markings, essentially taking inventory and designating it exclusively for a certain use. And it would still, option two, when it's in use, would not restrict the parking, when in use, would restrict the available parking supply, but would not restrict it completely for all hours of operation. So, and option two, at least immediately, would have less resources that we would need to designate in terms of adjusting our public parking, our signage, and other factors as well.
Will you be able to, and after hearing the discussion today and where we're perhaps leaning, be able to come back with an estimated cost of what these options would actually cost us? Because I know that we haven't gotten any numbers, and it's certainly premature for that. But do we have any ballpark figures? I mean, are we talking tens of thousands of dollars, or hundreds of thousands of dollars? What are we looking at? And I'm assuming each option carries its own price tag.
No, we don't have any cost options, or cost figures for these options yet, sir. But in terms of the options that are in front of you, obviously, option four is the cheapest because it doesn't do anything. But of the three options that would make changes to the current standards, option two would probably be the least. It would be more staff-driven and less infrastructure changes, signage, and those kind of factors. So, we're not talking in the hundreds of thousands of dollars at all. We're talking more about staff time and other factors. We do, I mean, we do have, we do have, we do have practice with our residential parking programs, so it would be some additional workload on staff to do that, but it's not one that requires a level of investment that's a little heavier if we were going to create some dedicated employee parking areas and permitted designated parking areas.
But of course, that would be offset by the income from the permits themselves.
It could be, again, as I pointed out earlier, when you're talking about this type of program in relation to other types of programs you do where you are looking for purely cost recovery, this is an asset that you're providing to a business that's different than other things. For example, we have many cities, or several cities around us who provide, who have public parking structures. And some of them look at, some of them decide to rent or lease space to private businesses, either through part of their entitlement process, or if they're in a parking district, some parking issues are alleviated or requirements are waived because they have that parking, and they correspondingly price that differently. So, it's not necessarily market rate for some of those agencies providing that service. But we're a little bit different because we have not, we have not really upgraded our parking lots in the last, I mean, minor changes here and there and maintenance. But we provide this right now as a public resource to everyone and anyone, obviously with certain restrictions. So, it gets a little complicated, well, we can make it complicated, but it's, you're not, you're not as bound by how you would set that fee.
Well, I know we can't compare with private parking, for example. It's kind of mixing apples with oranges. Just to give an example, in Pasadena, I know that they, their lots are not cheap, and I pay $150 a month for my parking spot, just to park. So, and that is because I'm a business. All right, but that's something to be decided down the road on this one, I guess. Thank you.
So, that's, Mayor Sternquist, members of the council, that's a general overview of kind of conceptual, and this is very conceptual, on a very conceptual level. And obviously, the parking study is there, has some reference points for some of the maps, so you can have that orientation towards what the parking looks like in the downtown area. So, we bring this forward, again, we've had some businesses have talked to us, given us feedback over the last several years, and recently as well.
I have a question. I'm having trouble getting my head around this thing. But what I'm wondering about, is there unanimity among the merchants for this? And I'm wondering about...
I think I would be willing to bet no on that question.
We haven't, we haven't asked for feedback yet, sir.
I mean, isn't there the thing that if you're giving parking to employees up close to wherever they work, then you're cutting down on the flow of potential customers, aren't you?
That is part of, that is part of the reason why you, the adjustments to the times have been made, yes. There's, the idea is you want a certain level of turnover for convenience for customers. So, that's true.
Yeah, but, well, what I heard you saying was that the merchants were pushing this for their employees.
We've gotten feedback from some of the, we've gotten feedback from some of the businesses over the years and even recently, especially the corner businesses at the corner of Las Tunas and Temple City Boulevard.
Which is a block away from where we have a public parking lot that's vacant all the time.
May I add a question to what you just said? Because I was going to ask, I think it's the same people over the years that...
Yes, I think you're right.
The escrow.
And I think, yeah, it's the escrow company.
And to follow up on that, obviously, I know we're at the very beginning stage, and we're only kind of just feeling this out right now, and still a lot more to come. But I think at some point, to follow up on Fernando's question, we certainly have to give notice to the business community as a whole of what we're considering so that we can hear and get their input, right? I mean, there's going to be people that are going to be sitting on that side saying, yes, we're all for it, and people on this side are going to be saying, no, we're not for that. And I think we need to be, they need to be heard.
They're going to be thinking we're losing money.
Well, exactly. Well, that was the argument a few years ago when we were last considering this.
Mayor, it becomes a discussion now, but I'm exactly with all of you is that, since we're already discussing, so I'll just throw this in here. Actually, I appreciate the presentation, but I'm a little dismayed that we spent more time talking about how to implement it than if there's a need to implement. So, I mean, I don't see the need like...
Yeah, with council members, we're saying... I don't know where this is coming from at this point, because again, this was an issue that we thoroughly vetted not two, three years ago. And certainly, I, at this point...
When I was on board previously.
Well, and I would be against any further studies at this point, because I don't know that we need that, and I don't frankly want to spend the money on it. The problem is, in Temple City, we have plenty of parking. Our problem is, as I said earlier, there's people, they just don't want to park there.
Or they don't want to walk.
Or they don't want to walk a block or two, or whatever it may take. But again, I understand that, and I certainly am willing to hear that argument again. But at the same time, I think we need to argue, hear the argument for both. So, you're right. I think we're kind of putting the horse before the cart here, before we're actually, I mean, why do something if there is no need, or what is the need? And then we can understand if there is a need, how are we going to solve that need?
Sure.
William?
Well, if, since, like, council member you were saying, we're kind of in discussion, I could maybe answer council member Viscara's question a bit more directly. Because when we did the Transpo study, that was also the time I served as mayor.
How long ago was that, William?
It was what?
2018, when I was mayor.
Oh, okay.
When I was mayor. And so...
So, it's your fault?
Yes, I take responsibility. It's always the mayor's fault.
Yeah, of course.
But I remember distinctly, it sticks with me to this day. We, before, so Transpo, as part of their services to us in putting that parking study together, was obligated to provide at least one community outreach meeting. And that community outreach meeting was specific to the business community, right? And what we did in-house to kind of complement that meeting was I went out with Tenny Chan, Ms. Tenny Chan at the time, and we walked four blocks of the downtown corridor from Kaufman to Primrose.
Both sides.
Both sides. And we, and again, I'm just sharing this anecdotally. I don't think we've necessarily documented this in the level of detail that perhaps we should have. And like, to your point, there is a mixed bag of feedback. But to say that the two-hour parking is some magical solution to our park, to this parking discussion, to me, doesn't fully capture the discussion. For example, some restaurants, I remember, because I asked them, hey, how is this two-hour parking turning out for you? And it says, why isn't it four hours? Because we have some patrons that actually sit at our restaurant and hang out. Students say, well, I'm going to, I can't remember that boba store on Camellia.
The what?
There's a boba tea shop on Las Tunas near Camellia. Yeah, and then they, I remember them saying, they said, well, we have patrons here that come here and study for...
And they do.
You know, students, right? Four, five hours, six hours. And so, really, the audience is really mixed. So, my issue with that parking study has always been, your consultants are coming in with some kind of formulas that they use. And so, there's, to me, it's always been this sort of binary discussion. It's either two hour, or it's all, no time limit. So, to me, when I'm reading this, I feel like this is at least an attempt to maybe find a middle ground. And that's why I asked for clarification about the incremental implementation, is we've talked about this as a council in years past, even going back to the controversial Las Tunas downtown reduce it to one lane issue. One of the things that always sticks to me this day was, if the one lane thing was so controversial, why didn't we just do like a pilot program? If it really was going to be that chaotic and messy, then let's see it, right? I mean, we never got to do it, right? But to me, that same sort of type of thinking analogy extends to really a lot of what we can do, and parking is sort of like one of them. I'm not saying these options really are the end-all, because honestly, I don't think anyone really knows. But otherwise, we're kind of left relying on, in my opinion, it's a parking study that failed to really reach out to the constituents. So, to council member Chavez's point, we, I remember sitting down with Transpo and telling them the findings that Ms. Tenny Chan and I found, and says, well, that clashes with the consultant's way of doing and analyzing the situation. It was, it was non-scientific in their opinion, it was not engineering-based. But I said, we're policymakers. So, as policymakers, we're not just looking strictly at the data and the engineering. We factor in the community outreach, which is what we've been doing all along, right? So, it's not based solely on what the consultant is telling us is what's right for downtown.
And I think your points are actually raised in the report on page 17, where it talks about the stakeholder engagement and what they did. I'm not sure, again, they state that they did a meeting with local business owners, and they did surveys. How many of those, I mean, they looked, they said they got a total of 184 survey responses. I don't know if that, doesn't appear to be broken down between businesses or residents. So, and there were some key findings, but obviously, they don't really coincide with what I think we're hearing out there, because according to them, the majority of the vehicles parked less than two hours, both on and off-street parking. And now we're hearing that, no, we need more. At the same time, they're also saying that some of the surveys indicate that we should remove the two-hour limit and/or create employee parking. So, things that were obvious, I think, but never really acted upon, I guess you could say. And contrary to what you were actually observing, probably. And so, that may be the problem. And they do raise a couple of good points, though, that maybe business employees may not be aware of the available long-term parking or where it is. And maybe that's through our fault, that maybe we need to educate them more about that. Although, it appears to me that the people that are behind emphasizing this need to change are generally limited, at least as far as I can tell, to one or two businesses. And the arguments we heard before is that their employees simply are afraid to walk from the business to one of those lots at night because of safety concerns, which...
Council member Chavez, should we open up the public hearing, I think, first, before we...
All right.
Mayor Sternquist, it's not a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's not a public hearing, so it's a discussion. But if you want to open for public comment, that would...
I mean, public comment.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Is there any public comment on this, Osama?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Usam Animri. I'm a Temple City resident. I'm also a transportation public safety commissioner. I took some notes...
Yeah, it's hard to hear.
I can't hear you.
Okay.
I don't think that microphone is working very well tonight.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. I took some notes here. First one, I want to ask the city manager, you mentioned you have 457 parkings on-site. Out of those numbers, the 457, how many are all-day parking within the lots that are close to the businesses? Can I ask the city council, I mean, city manager questions?
You can't, I don't know if they get an answer.
Okay. Yeah, we need to know how many are available, because if you want to break down 20% or 10%, I think that percentage should come out of the all-day parking. Because who's parking there? Most likely are the commercial employees. The other comment I put down, I say there are too many variables in play here. One of the things, like, if you go with parking permits, and you mentioned first come, first served, I bet the first served is the business owner. They want their parking permit in front of their business. And then how do you specify how many permits you're going to issue for each business? Because each business obviously have different employee number. So, that would not first come, first served, and for how long do they get that permit? If they get one, they don't get another one within like the next month? They give a chance to other employees to participate in this program? I think something we have to look at is the trip generation versus the parking available for each business, because that's what's going to give us an indication of how many parking spaces each business will be allowed to use, or be permitted to use if that goes through. And most likely, the business owners, they're going to complain after the fact that when their customers are going to come in and they can't find parking, the most likely they're going to leave somewhere else. That's what I would do technically. And those are my comments for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to answer the one...
It's up to you.
No problem. Mr. Nimri's question about the 457, I would have to, I was just flipping through the study right now. I'd have to get back to him, I'd have to get back to the council on that. But it's, I don't, I don't know how it's divided, so I want to make sure I give both the council and Mr. Nimri accurate information.
And... May I add one more thing to the mind?
Yes.
I think...
You know, we got to remember also that the Primrose Park took away the lot seven parking. So, that's like a deduction of available parking that's available for all-day parking.
Okay.
So, we lose that number right there also, just to keep in mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, they need to fill out a form, don't they? Could, be sure to fill out a form before you leave.
I think the Primrose lot, when we built the park, we added that back. It just put it in a different place. The Primrose lot used to be in north, and now we moved it south, one lot south. We actually have more parking spaces than they would before.
Okay, Steve?
Mayor Sternquist, Mayor Pro Tempur Man, council members and city staff, this has been a perplexing problem for a long time. And if they're gonna, if it's going to end up being separate commercial parking spaces away from the businesses, one thing I would suggest is get ahold of MTA about doing a shuttle service. They do this a lot in a lot of different areas for the... They do this a lot in a lot of different areas for this kind of, these kind of things. And this needs to be looked at for all the businesses. The first thing, when I go into my bank, Chase, is that some of the employees are getting parking tickets, because there's no place to park, they park under two-hours space, they end up with a parking ticket. This needs to be looked at to make sure that anybody that are employed by these businesses aren't going to end up with citations. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, closing public comment, and any questions or comments? Let's start with Mayor Pro-Tem.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So, I think Mr. Nimri brings up a really good point, and hadn't thought about that. We have all, we know we have portions of public lots that are all-day parking. So, really, my question is, is the location and distribution of all-day parking, is it consolidated or concentrated in certain areas? I mean, we all know the lots adjacent to where Primrose Park is now, or at least a portion of that lot is all-day, if I remember correctly. But, if I also recall correctly, if you look at the south side of Las Tunas, between Primrose and Temple City Boulevard, I believe that entire lot is two-hour parking only. So, are we basically saying all businesses within this radius must all park in one location? Or could there be a possibility where that's more distributed evenly? Because like, if that could, then maybe that solves the problem indirectly, right? So, I don't know if I'm, if this is factual or not, but perhaps that's one thing to really look at, is that distribution of two-hour versus all-day. And again, I kind of made some of my comments earlier before, when we were asking questions. To me, I don't see, we have, in my opinion, we have nothing to lose from trying something different. Because I've always, I've said this when we did the parking study with Transport, that my main concern with that was that the industry follows like a certain formula and pattern, right? And the question I always had is, do those formulas and patterns really apply to our city? You know, every city has a unique sort of aspect to the dynamics between the businesses with each other in relation to where the available spaces are in relation to our downtown corridor. I don't think they've ever answered that question. And like, to Councilmember Chavez's point, he pointed out some of those elements that they flagged as part of that community outreach discussion, but they simply flagged it, they never said, well, that was an impactful portion of their final recommendation.
Well, they don't think there was a recommendation or a solution, we just brought it up.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, exactly. They just said, okay, well, that was an observation, and I want to say that was most likely brought up because Ms. Tenny Chan and I was able to obtain the information that we thought they were going to obtain. So, I thought community outreach was, they're going to go and solicit opinions and feedback from businesses, we were telling them, business owners don't have time to attend a community meeting. And if Peter Choi was still here, he'd say the same thing. From our experience, most business owners are busy running a business, they're not going to, they, most of them don't have time to come out. So, I said, well, why don't we go to them? Well, Transport didn't do that. They said, we hosted it at one restaurant that was near the intersection of Temple City Boulevard and Las Tunas, and they said, come here, come to us. Handful of people showed up, but to me, it was, to me, because I was there, I was at the community meeting, and I was also walking with Tenny up and down the block, and the opinions that we heard was, like we all know here, it's all over the place, right? So, that's really the main issue I've always had with that Transport study. And I always told Mr. Cook all these years, I said, well, what's stopping us from a city from trying something based on what we know, right? And not relying solely on Transport and their recommendations? Because to me, it's analogous to everything that we do, is soliciting feedback from the constituents, and, now, I'm not saying take my word for it, I mean, I think perhaps since COVID, maybe there has been a change of perspective from our business owners about how they view the parking situation, and I absolutely agree, I think it's always worthwhile to update sort of the information that we're getting, update the kind of feedback that we're getting from our constituents, and try, I think it's our responsibility to at least listen, and then maybe consider the possibilities, maybe doing something different than what we've done before. And to me, a pilot program, if it doesn't work out, like Councilmember Chavez said, let's say, there is no demand for it, it's just completely moot, right? Then, I think that's a good data point to have, is like, hey, look, we tried this, there was no demand for it, we've addressed it.
Well, what feedback did you get when you did it?
Well, the feedback was two, my main takeaway was the two-hour restriction is not a magic solution for our downtown corridor, because patrons of different businesses are going to stay there for different lengths of time. Two-hour is not a magic number, in my opinion.
And how did the employee part work out?
Well, most, I think most, I think the feedback we got was kind of similar to someone else mentioning it, was employees were going out every two hours and trying to switch a spot. And so, I think that's the current practice for a lot of businesses that may not be directly adjacent or near where the, where the parking spaces have no time restrictions, right? I think overall, we've made improvements, absolutely. Like, I heard some people say, well, the parking lot on Workman and Temple City Boulevard is not used, maybe during the weekdays, but on the weekends, that lot's, from what I've seen, is it's well-used, it's well-used. And if I recall, that's a no-time-restriction lot, right?
Correct.
That one? Yeah, but maybe what I would suggest is, at least, maybe we should consider looking at the distribution of the parking spaces, and maybe having staff bring back some ideas about, in my opinion, option two makes sense to at least try as a pilot program, and to Mr. Cook's point, that's also least disruptive or impactful to the way our current parking enforcement staff are operating. Thank you.
Can I?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wrote some notes I don't want to forget, as I get older, I forget And I agree with Mayor Pro-Tem, but to Transport's defense, you know, like you said, the business owners simply didn't participate, or they didn't get the participation that maybe they needed. And I find that a lot of the business owners don't really speak up until there's change is made, and then they're upset about it. And it's like, why did you do that? So, again, that gets back to my point, that I would like to hear more from the business community. Obviously, all we can do is let them know, and if they decide not to show up, well, at least we've done our due diligence. Do we have a map of each parking area and the times or restrictions that are attached to that? I was looking for it in the report, I didn't actually see it where it was broken down into areas. Do we have such a map, Brian?
I think so, that's, I think that's page...
Is that on, what page is that on?
Page eight.
Okay, so we have, wait, page eight of the report, Transport's report?
Yeah.
Okay, let me look at that real quick, because I want to make sure it's what I was looking for. Page six, seven, okay, eight, so, so those are all the parking lots, God, it's awful small, but, okay. Yeah, I got to see it. So, this tells us, okay, so this tells us what we're dealing with. And to your point in the report, these are all the public parking spaces in the city? No, that can't be.
Not, so the...
So, where is there a map that shows us all the public parking, how many spots, and for how long a person can park there? Do we have such a map?
Yeah, this is it, it's congre, it's combined with the private parking. So, if you take out the orange, if anybody's looking in the audience as well, if you take out the orange lots, everything else is public parking. So, the kind of fuchsia pink and the green is all public parking, and those are the amount of spaces that are in each, in each of those.
So, that's the 465 spaces? Is that the 465 spaces then?
Approximately, in terms of, yes, in terms of our spots...
Or at least in the downtown area.
Yeah, in the downtown area, yes.
Okay, all right. Because we know we have other lots elsewhere.
Yes, correct.
But those are kind of in the...
Right, and so, the ones that are in the kind of pink color are the two-hour parking, the ones that are in the green color, and as Councilmember you had pointed out before, if you go to the Primrose, corner of Primrose and Woodruff, where it says 59, that's actually 64, or 62, but four of those spaces are for EVs now. So, that's a little bit off, but pretty close in terms of the amount of parking inventory you have at that lot.
So, that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I think to one of the points that William brought up, or that has been brought up before, you know, when you go to your supermarket, and I know just from personal observation, they encourage their employees to park away from the store entrance, and for a simple reason, because they want their customers to be able to park near their public entrance so that they'll use the store. And I think that's the argument that we're going to hear from many of our businesses is, and we've heard those before, I could almost guarantee that the restaurant owners are going to come in and say, we want limited parking because we need that turnover. Now, to William's point, how long should that be? Should it be two hours? Should it be three? I don't know. There have been a change in the way people use these restaurants perhaps, and as we saw earlier, we heard earlier, many young people now use them almost as libraries or their own personal dens to do their homework, and, you know, two hours is simply not enough. But, again, I come back to the point, I think, that Councilmember you brought in, brought up, is, to me, it's like, okay, we've identified certain options, but I don't know that we're necessarily there yet. For me, I think I need to know, what are the questions that are being asked, what are the concerns, and who are they being made by? So that, otherwise, how am I going to create or consider a policy that will work? Because I don't know, at this point, what the needs are necessarily. I know it's been vaguely referred to the fact that we've heard from a couple of businesses that would like to be able to park, you know, next to their business because of safety concerns, but are we really going to legislate because two businesses have come forward and expressed that concern? I don't know, maybe we will, but at least we should give the opportunity to be heard by others. But, again, even going through that, if tonight, we want to obviously give some direction, I would agree, based on the information that's been provided to us so far, to me, option two would seem to make the most sense to look into further, rather than the others. It's not only less costly, but probably going to be easier to enforce. But again, that even needs, I think, to be tweaked, and I'm sure staff will do a good job about that, because for me, it would be, well, how long is it going to be for? Is it only going to be Monday through Friday? Is it going to apply to street parking? Those are all questions that are going through my mind as far as this permit program. And also, as we heard earlier, one of our now newest commissioners brought up a good point, and that is, you know, should we, should it be for a certain time of day only? Or, you know, what, and again, what are these companies asking for? If it's, if they're saying, hey, we need employee parking from eight to five, okay, we could probably work for that, but what if they say we need it from eight to 12 midnight? I don't know. Can we do that? Are we going to do that? But, those are the questions that are going through my mind.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, I'm done.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
How is Camellia Square working? There's a lot of employees, there's a lot of customers?
In terms of, in terms, it would just be kind of anecdotal as to what we see, but in terms of...
There's no restrictions there, are there? Well, it's a private lot.
It's a private, it's completely private, so they have their, they enforce, I don't think there's any enforced restrictions.
Where do their employees park? They have to park there?
Well, that was part of my question.
Below, down, below.
Where?
Underground.
Underground, well...
Yeah, they have underground parking, but during peak days, like weekends, even the underground is packed.
Yeah, you can't find a spot if you go in there.
We did have conditions of...
But, so, there's no controls, absolutely not.
Yeah, but the employee parking way in the back first.
Right.
Are they directed to do that?
I believe so.
Well, they're probably directed by each business and whoever's running that center. They can do it, because it's their lot.
And there were some conditions of approval, it's a little more complicated, because it was a condominium type of development, where certain property rights and other components are different for the different buildings, but there were several kind of restrictions on, and encouragements in the CUPs as conditions of approval related to their parking. So, but do we go in, but we as an agency do, don't go in and enforce that, because that's on private property? But, but there are conditions of approval that talk about, especially when the Planet Fitness went in, and other, and other businesses, as well as some of the restaurants that were, which restaurant use was, had some parameters put around it in terms of the conditions of how Camellia Square would be built out or filled in, for lack of a better term. So, there's some of that, but in terms of our monitoring of it, I couldn't say one way or another.
Essentially, you're saying it's not germane to what we're talking about with the downtown stuff.
Different rules apply.
Again, it's, we just don't have the data related to it, other than what we've known, what we've, what we have placed as conditions of approval for some of the occupants of that site.
And the same goes for probably the Applebee's lot, or old Applebee's lot, that's private parking.
That is private parking.
Where are their employees parking? I go in there almost every other day, and it's, certain times, you can't find a spot. I don't know if that's because of the, of the amount of people that are going there to shop and to eat, or half of those spots, I mean, employees got to be parking somewhere.
Anecdotally, they are parking in the lot.
In the lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
If you go there right before lunch hour, when the businesses start opening, you'll start seeing, there's already cars in there, and the only ones that would be there at the time are the employees. So, but again, that's a private lot, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, there. I think the first thing we want to do, at least in my opinion, is to first, first of all, establish what we're trying to solve. I'm not sure what we're solving here, we spent all the time talking about implementation as if the problem exists. I'm not convinced there is a problem. I mean, based on the Transport study, that, you know, I granted Mayor Pro-Tem's point of, while they may not have done the survey the way it should be, but I'm not convinced there's a problem, the data presented by Transport's study does not support, there is a parking problem, and I don't think we should make public policy based on one or two businesses' complaint, because if you talk about an office, folks who have an, I mean, I appreciate Commissioner Nimri's point, you know, maybe the parking, they should have certain parking for businesses, and so, I would venture to say that we should have different parking requirements with different uses. You know, I would say, from our own specific plan, our own city planning for Las Tunas, I tend to say that we want to favor retail, because that brings the biggest benefit to our city. And I think we should look at the needs of the retail businesses in our downtown, and we should encourage that, and I would venture to say that if we, as retail business owners, the restaurant owners, the shop owners, I think they would favor having more fluid parking, rather than all-day parking. And folks that work in offices, they would just have to walk a little bit further, because I think as a city, we should have a public policy that supports and encourages rotational parking, because that generates the biggest revenue to our city. That's point number one. And I would say that people that said that, well, we're not safe, it's not good to, I mean, if you give people choices, park in front of their business or walk a block away, the natural thing is, you know, park in front of their businesses. I think we should set policies to encourage people to park away, so if it indeed establishes that there's a need for, there is indeed a problem that we need to solve, we need to understand why there are people not parking on the street. I think in this stage, where we're... I I think in this stage where we really emphasize sustainability, I I think the days, you know, I'm I'm an older architect, I built a lot of parking lots in my life. I really think the days of building big parking lots are over. It's so unsustainable. I think streets are there for parking purposes, I think we should use them. I look at a map here, page eight here, and unfortunately, if audience can see, there are plenty of parking. I mean, every study that we've done back in two thousand twelve and recently, two thousand nineteen, they all show even during the peak hour, there are parking spaces. I'm not convinced there is. If the issue is safety, I think our city is pretty safe. I I I think walking a block or two is 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 an issue. I remember when we first built the Workman Lot on Temple City. One of my biggest complaints was that we put too much architectural finishes in front of it. And and I felt really strongly that we should not have done that. And I was a four-one vote on that on that one. And because it blocks the view, people coming to shop cannot see the parking lot. Even though I'm an architect, I love architectural finishes, but I think that's a wrong treatment for publicly owned parking lot. And.
Where is that Vincent you're talking about?
That's the latest parking lot. Going to Temple City. I think that's a wrong finish for the lot because people can't see it.
But that train left the station.
I understand, and I lost that vote. But I want to say that because parking lots are there to serve not a function, not just because we provide parking, and ultimately, they provide parking to support certain needs. And I think we have, we have not done the right thing on that one, and I don't think we should do it again. I remember, but I may pretend probably a good point, the distribution of two hour parking. I remember we actually was in front of this body before, and it was voted down again, four-one vote, was we were going to consider moving some of the, because there are two lots, one on east, on the south side of Las Tunas, on the on east and west side of Temple City. And there is one side is all two hour parking, the other side got half two hour parking, half all day parking. And while the proposal was brought before this body, was to move some of the all day lot to 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 the other sides to redistribute. Because the argument, Mayor Protem, was that people park all day and in all day parking. So once east side of of Temple City, the businesses were suffering because they said, people from across the street park on my side. And I only got half the parking spaces, whereas the other people got, I actually just added it, eighty-three two hour parking versus the other one side, thirty-one two hour parking. So I I see something minor adjustments like that maybe worthwhile looking at. I mean, I I think I agree, we don't need necessarily need a wholesale change. But but at the time, the council did not see what was needed. And unfortunately, we have quite a bit of turnover restaurants, because restaurants, they wanted. But I also agree too, instead of just four hour parking, restaurants actually wanted three hour parking because people tend to linger on for lunch hour, so. But really, I I spent a lot of time, but really, I want to see we establish there is a need first before we can do the details of how we solve it.
But you know, just to follow up real quick, I'm sorry, that if I remember, the the theme at that time was, or the conclusion was, we really don't have a parking problem, we have a problem where people want to park.
Correct.
And that's always been the issue, and it still is.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. You know, I I don't really see.
I agree.
A problem either, Vincent. You know, I'm I'm home a lot and I just go up and down and around Temple City a lot. Most of you are working, Fernando, you frequent Las Tunas. And I don't think there's really a time of day when I can't find a parking space. I might have to park a little bit further down from where I'm going, but I almost always can find a space. You know, when when people want to go somewhere, they're going to make an effort to do it. When the mall is busy, people will park, it's, you know, wherever they can find a space. And they might not be happy, but they'll go around and find a space, even if it's far down from the entrance to the stores. Of course, everybody wants to be up near up near the front, and they do it. I I just don't think that we need even a pilot program to come to some conclusion that what's what we're doing now isn't really working. I don't see that it's not working, I think maybe it's not working for a couple of businesses, maybe the people that have complained. And I think like Vincent said, maybe we can tweak the amount of time, like you said also, William, and maybe come up to, you know, a happier medium where maybe it's not two hours, but maybe it's three or four hours so that there is some more available time for people to park. And and I think, you know, if you go to a restaurant and, you know, women can talk forever. I I mean, I know men can also, but you probably aren't going to stay more than three hours. You know, staying four hours, I think it's a little bit of an imposition on the restaurant also. I mean, they want to have some type of turnover to get people, you know, new people to come in. But I do think there's ways that maybe staff can look at tweaking the amount of time and then, you know, letting those businesses know that are concerned, that we're looking at it. I I don't want to see staff go through all the trouble of, you know, doing a pilot program, and then we come up with a result that we really didn't need it. So maybe if we look at tweaking it first and seeing how that works, maybe that would be an idea. Tom?
I I, my thing is that, you know, we're kind of working in a, I don't know, very, a lot of vagueness here. Why do we invite whoever is concerned with this? Who, I I don't want to call them complainants because it's not really, they're not complaining, but they want to see some change. Invite them to council to tell us their concerns and and what they would like to see. That way, we hear it from them, or at least maybe staff speak to them and report back to us so that we can identify what those concerns are. Because otherwise, we're just kind of just out there thinking, okay, we think this is what they want or. I I still not have not heard exactly what the concern is. If the, and I got a good feeling, I think I know the concern, and Vince touched on this, is that we've got some businesses who feel that it's unsafe for their employees to walk a block or two to their car. Okay, well, if that's the issue, then maybe there's something we need to do besides changing the block. Maybe we need to provide, you know, some extra security or something that will ease their mind as far as where they have to go. You know, we could have, you know, you know, maybe some extra share of patrol those lots or or some of our staff patrol them more often to give them a little more peace of mind. I'm sure Ed would love to drive through those lots. But see, but that's, for me, that's what I need to hear to make a decision.
Actually, Mayor, may I just follow on on Councilmember Travis's point? Actually, those, I I remember at least one or two businesses actually came in and actually said to us they felt unsafe.
Right, I remember that, yeah.
Remember, at the time, I was saying, well, what's wrong with the Primrose lot? Oh, it's out and nobody can see it. But 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 that was then, and this is now. We already finished the Primrose parking lot, but reversed the parking lots, not the entire parking lot. I mean, I love it every time I go back there next to Primrose Park and I see all that parking is well utilized. I bet more people parked there, because I always remember that Primrose parking lot in the back was hardly full. But now you go there during peak hour and, you know, there's still a few spots.
Most of our lots are well lit.
Yeah.
They're used. And again, you know, you're never going to cut crime a hundred percent. I mean, things happen, there's no question about that. But at least we can take measures to mitigate those concerns, if that, those are the concerns, you know. Or is there a concern that it's just too far away? Well, okay, maybe we can work out, I think somebody mentioned, you know, maybe a shuttle service or something. But again, how how am I to suppose to make a decision without knowing what what the problem is? And I don't think we have that before as very specific, specific enough, I think, at this point.
Mayor, can I add to that? I, well, I I think the discussion has been really constructive for me because kind of looking at that map of the distribution of parking. Because again, in in my discussions with with Brian, most of the complaints were stemming from the businesses located near the intersection of Temple City Boulevard and Las Tunas. And so you'll notice that at least in the public lot that's on the southwest corner, so between Primrose and Temple City Boulevard, there is no all day parking at all on that block. Everything is two hour parking, but then you look at some of the other lots, well, I guess the northeast corner also has that problem too. But every every other lot has some access to all day parking. So perhaps maybe what Councilmember you and Mayor Sternquist you brought up is perhaps staff can look at simply tweaking what we already have. And and I I would, I think that's a great idea.
Just.
Yeah.
Didn't you make the point, though, that that you never really did get a reading from the owners, the merchants, about where the problem actually was, because you couldn't contact enough of them?
Well, so so my, what I what I took away from that experience was that you can't have only one type of parking situation in any given area, right? So in in reality, most of our lots probably don't have that challenge because there is access to both two hour parking, just visually here, closest to the stores, and there's all day parking that's placed away from the stores. But there's like one, there's two two areas where all day parking is just completely missing. It's not even available there, right?
But is there a need for all day parking there? That's my question.
Well, if.
Is there a need for it?
I guess then the question is, how do you determine the need?
Well, by asking the businesses.
Right, and I'm saying those are the businesses that are telling us. Those are the businesses that spoke to me and says, hey, we have a problem here.
But it, this is specific to employee parking, correct?
Right, so I'm saying, I think the discussion we had tonight kind of might indirectly have a potential solution to that by simply redistributing what we already have without having to go through all this stuff.
So it seems that the businesses are located on Temple City and Las Tunas, correct? The ones that are basically talking. And their concern is that there is not sufficient all day parking close enough to them. But if I'm looking at the map, is that the Workman Lot that has thirty-six spots there that's all day?
The, no, that's that's the one adjacent to the businesses, the one that's twenty-seven is the Workman Lot.
Okay, so the twenty-seven, what's what's thirty-six, because it looks like it's green to me.
That's the lot that's split between, that's that's conjoined together, so you can go through the entire area.
The first two rows would be two hour, the next two row would be all day.
There's thirty-six all day parking right behind the complainant's business.
But on the other side, though, there is no, there is no all day parking.
So.
On the other side of what?
If you go to the, if you go towards Primrose, so you go to that area, that next block over.
Yeah, so folks on the, so the complaint had been, at least to me, was folks on the left, on the west of Temple City, they want to park at the the all day lot on the east side of.
They don't want to walk across the street and down, basically.
Right.
They want to just walk down. So what I think, so maybe to Mayor Protem's point, where we have identified fourteen and fourteen and twenty-six and twenty-nine two hour parking, maybe change some of that to all day parking, is that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that the point?
Yeah.
Well, we could look at that, I I don't have a problem with that.
The previous decision that came before this council was to reduce some of the thirty-six there all day and put them across the street. So basically, to Mayor Protem's, what redistribute some of the all day, so they have them on both sides, so people don't have to walk.
And do we have, do we have any idea how many employees are going to require this all day parking? Is it two, five, ten?
Well, we can assume that there, many of the businesses do now. We do not have, we don't have any data, independent data that tells us. But just anecdotally, if you drive through the downtown area and you see some of the parking that's done, yes.
Well, how about if we knock on the door and say, how many employees do you need this for? Won't they tell us? And then we'll know, we don't have to guess. It can't be that hard. I I'll volunteer to do it if you want.
Okay. So what is your pleasure to have staff look at what we already have and look at tweaking and redistributing some of the?
Well, I actually, if I make, try and make a point clearer, I don't want to, a solution. I want to know the problem first, so.
So can you come up with the problem and then we'll work on a solution, Mr. Cook?
Sure, I can, we can try to do some additional outreach. And at least from the direction I've heard from council as well, generally, an option to consider would be to look at adjusting some of the, potentially adjusting that two hour parking. But depending on the direction I get from council tonight, pending some additional information and additional analysis.
Is that all right with you, Tom?
That's fine, I don't, I just, like I said, I I think as a council, we've always urged as much information as we can so we can make that intelligent, informed decision. I just don't think we're there yet. I mean, I've 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 heard of some complaints from two businesses. Where those two businesses are exactly, I have no idea, who they are, I have no idea. I got a good, I got a good guess who they are, and it's probably the same ones that were complaining to us two years ago. But if that's the case, all right, fine. What is the problem? How many spots do you need? Let's see if we can find a place to put your employees so that they feel safe and we still accommodate the rest of the community as well. You know, that that's really our our task at hand is to is to make decisions based on the overall community and what's best for them if we can, rather than just legislate, as Vince said, for two businesses. You can't do that.
You know, and I wonder if there was COVID turnover with any of those businesses too.
I don't know, I mean, those are all questions.
Be the same people.
You know, and looking at the map, it appears, and 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 again, that it was, it is that that area that that we identified. Right there, Las Tunas and Temple City Boulevard. But, you know, we've got some restaurants in that area too.
I think there's a new one.
There's our new restaurant, yeah.
Well, I I think to Councilmember Yu's point, that there was a basis for potentially moving and redistributing that's that, the all day from the east side to the west side. So I would argue that data and that study has already been done. So there is justification for doing so, and so it's just a matter of whether we say, hey, maybe we didn't make the right decision at a time, and here's a chance for us to revisit it and and change that.
And if I could just add to that, back then, we didn't have our Primrose Park completed. Now that we we've got new parking spaces, so things could be a little bit different as well. So, you know, maybe we'll consider all the whole thing together. Maybe staff, when you bring back this, I would suggest update this map perhaps. And then, and then make some, and then, you know, minor adjustments, I I think would be worth looking at. I mean, it's not a big expense to just change our sign or two.
Greg, do we need a motion on this, or just direction, right?
Discussion, and you've been giving good direction to the city manager.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. All right, so you have direction, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So we're going to go back now to item eight, right?
Yes, ma'am, item eight.
And this is a public hearing, adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-six oh three, approving the master fees and fine schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And we have our administrative services director here.
So Mayor Stern, Mayor Sternquist, real quick, this is the first of three steps in the budget process that you will be considering. You did go through during your budget study session, even though it was labeled master fee and fine schedule study. The find, the master fee and fine schedule study was presented to the city council. And our administrative services director and city treasurer will give you. give you a brief presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. So as the city manager mentioned, this is one of the, the first of the three public hearings we'll have tonight related to the budget. So as we discussed back on May 27th, it sounds like it's a long time ago, as I caught COVID a few days later, but today, for this item, we are asking city council to open the public hearing, receive input, close the public hearing, and then adopt resolution 225603, approving the fees and fines schedule for fiscal year 2223. In the study session, we mentioned that, or I mentioned that the CPI from March 2021 to March 2022 was 8.5%. It was felt that if we were to increase our fees by this amount, it would be a substantial impact to the fee structure and would be, the fees would be too high for a lot of our community members and businesses. So we had recommended increasing it by 3%, and that would be less than the CPI, but however, it's more affordable than the 8.5%. One thing I wanted to bring up, the fees that had no increases or the 3% was not applied to were things like the public records documents, requests, return check charges, that's set by the state. The annual dog licenses, altered and delinquent fees for seniors are not increasing. Parks development fee, our sewer reconstruction fee for multiple families, the overnight parking permit and oversized daily vehicle parking permits.
Mayor, may I ask a quick question? Director Paragis, parks development fee and sewer reconstruction, why are those kept the same? Do they require a public hearing on some of those, or why is that?
They do, I believe what it's set by, I think, the county.
And that would be also potentially a 218 requirement as well, because it's a property-based fee.
Not public hearing.
Yeah, and a vote. It would go through what's called a 218 protest proceeding. So that's a little bit.
You mean parks development fee?
I believe the parks development fee, I have to defer to my colleague, I believe that has to go through a 218 protest proceeding as well.
Okay, and then we're going to more of the parks and recreation fees, such as the use of lights for athletic fields, the tennis court for non-Temple City organizations for private lessons also, administrative fees for the excursions, fee and charge classes, the Stars Club, Teen Zone, and the youth sports. Additionally, the late pickup fee for youth programs. I want to make a comment that these are not increasing only because the 3% did not affect, did not factor into for an increase of the fee. So next year, if you were to apply another factor or CPI, these fees most likely will increase for next year. And then lastly, none of the fines that are specified as violations of our Temple City municipal code are increased. So those are remaining status quo. Any questions at this point? Any other questions?
Any questions?
So tonight, as I mentioned, we're requesting council to open the public hearing, receive the input, close the public hearing, and then adopt resolution number 225603, approving the master fees and fines schedule for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. Seeing no one, we are going to close the public hearing. Are there any final questions or comments from any of the council members?
I just want to make a very general comment, if I may, Madam Mayor. I think the consideration of increase of these fees is well justified in light of the fact that the general movement in inflation is around 8.5%. So I really appreciate staff recommending a 3% increase, but yet we have kept most of the parks fee, the using of our parks and rec facility fee out from the increase. So I think that's a good approach that we should take.
Okay, may we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 22-5603, approving the master fees and fines schedule for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
A second.
Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay.
Next one.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. And now we are on B, adoption of resolution number 22-5602, adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. This is as required by state law, what's called the GAN limit, how much you essentially an analysis to see what you can, what you can essentially raise in terms of revenue. We're well below that, but I just, one thing I do want to note is I want to thank our admin services director and city treasurer. Most cities actually do this, they actually contract this out. Susan does it herself, and I do appreciate that. And I, when I was a finance director in another city, I contracted this out to do as well, so appreciate her work on this.
Okay, are there any council questions? All right, open the public hearing. None, close the public hearing. Any final questions or comments?
Can I just say something real quick? Thank you for pointing that out, that our admin services director and treasurer, does that work for us? Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes. All right, can we have a council motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 22-5602, adopting the annual appropriations limit for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Second.
Okay, no objections? May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yep, yes.
Thank you. Sorry. Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, we move to item C, adoption of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, and members of the council. Here's your grand finale for tonight. I, we went through a very lengthy budget discussion earlier this month, but let me reiterate again, my thanks to our admin services director and city treasurer, she does an outstanding job. Our process is about checks and balances and appropriate roles and segregation of duties, and I think we do that really well for a small city. I also, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the audit committee as well, they're part of that process throughout. And lastly, I want to thank the management team across the board, several of them are here, Mr. Reimers, Mr. Matsumoto, Mr. Ozumi, who oversees a big portion of our, of our budget and the team. It's really them on a day-to-day basis that are doing not only the right thing, but also to checking and making sure that we're getting the services that we need to get as a contract city. I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of the work that Brian, Scott, and Adam do on a day-to-day basis, and then overseeing it all, our admin services director and city treasurer. So with that, I'd like, if I may, Mayor, turn it over to Susan.
Thank you again, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members. This is our budget adoption for next fiscal year 2022, 2023. And it's requested that council open the public hearing, receive the input, close the public hearing, then provide directions and on additions or deletions to the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 budgets and CIP. And then lastly, approve resolution 225604, adopting the fiscal year 2022, 2023 proposed budget, including any changes that are made tonight. And lastly, required annually, we request that you review and approve the updates to our general fund reserve classifications, which I'll go over. So in summary, the proposed fiscal year 2223 budget for the general fund, which is our main operating fund, our operating revenues are $16,257,000, less our operating expenditures of $15,289,000, which leaves us an operating surplus of almost $968,000. Non-operating budgets, we have a total transfer of $6,000 coming in from gas tax, and then we have a one-time expenditures, which include equipment for several of our divisions, the updates to our ordinances for the community development department. We also have the underpass pump station maintenance, one-time costs for next year. We're purchasing a front loader and after equipment for our new Ford interceptor that we're hoping to order if Ford is accept, once Ford accepts orders again. So with that, our net general fund revenues over expenditures is decreased to $482,225. This slide is just a pie chart showing where our revenues come from. As you can see, taxes, which, property taxes, sales tax, our franchise fees, our TOT fees, those make up for some of the taxes here, and as you can see, it's 45% of our revenues, general fund revenues. Intergovernmental is our in-lu vehicle license fees at 34%. So those two combined is 78%, 79% of our general fund budget revenue. Next year, our operating revenues compared to our current budget this year is increasing by $836,515, which is a 5.4% increase. So that's a modest increase for us, mainly it's the taxes, and that's in the sales tax part. We are budgeting an additional $392,000 for sales tax, which causes, which is most of the increase in our taxes. The other big thing is the intergovernmental fees or revenues. Again, as I mentioned, it's the in-lu vehicle license fee, and based on our third-party consultant, HDL, we will be getting almost $239, or just a little over $238,000 next year compared to this year. Our charges for services are increasing this year with an increase of $225,600. However, our fines and forfeitures are projecting lower than this year. It may change by the fourth quarter. We'll see how, when our funds come in or revenues come in. And then the use of money, when this was first developed, this is our interest income, I had projected almost a $20,000 lower budget. However, since then, the rates for LEAF, which is the biggest depository that we use, their rates at this time when I developed this budget was, I believe, 0.3%. Now it's at 0.9%. So most likely, it will be coming back to your first quarter or mid-year to increase the budget for our interest income. Now, our expenditures by function, you can see every year, it's always public safety because that is one of the important services we provide to our community. We have the general government that runs the city and provides, you know, helps run public safety, community services, community development, and our public work. So this is just to indicate how big of a slice all these expenses functions take, take up. In our general fund, our revenues was increased by about, I think, $836,000. Our expenditures, though, is also increasing by almost $804,000. Again, it's similar to the same increases our revenues. The major increases that we're estimating next year is the parks and rec programming as we're ramping up back to 100% of operations, not quite there, but almost. So we're looking at $280,000 expenditures, which primarily is the part-time salaries. Utilities, it is increasing to $175,000 because of the rates. And then travel and training, this is the first time in two years we've budgeted for travel and training at almost $38,000. As, you know, the Corona or pandemic hopefully will die down soon, although we said that, what, two years ago, a year ago, we're hoping to travel, staff is hoping to travel and train hopefully next year. And then the other major increases, of course, is our CalPERS retirement costs at almost $56,000. On the major one-time expenditures, we do have, as I mentioned, the community development ordinance updates at $195,000, purchase of the front loader at almost $66,000. And then every year, we budget for the maintenance of effort for when we spend funds out of the Road Maintenance and Repair Act funds, which we are planning to do next year. And I'll talk about this slide later. So the proposed general fund budget maintains our service levels, it provides a balanced budget, it reflects our revenue recovery, and also, most importantly, it continues our financial stability for the city. Our fund balance estimate, so we are looking at on July 1st, 2022, fund balance of almost $22.5 million. And with a budget surplus of $482,000, we're looking at almost $23 million in fund balance reserves. Now, of this fund balance reserve, we are looking to continue committing $3.5 million, and that consists of emergency disasters, liquidity, and also any local economic uncertainty. The assigned amount of $10,455,000, that consists of reserving funds for activities such as facilities management, we have economic development, and also any one-time expenditures at the council's discretion. And then lastly, the unassigned fund balance of almost $9 million. And again, this one is not designated for anything, so again, it's at council's discretion on what we can do with these funds. Next is, I don't know if you can read, is the five-year forecast that went over also on May 27th. Some of the assumptions that were used for this five-year projection were, our, again, HDL, our third-party consultant, provided projections for our property tax revenues in the next five years. However, to be a little bit more conservative, I'm only using 99% of that. Same thing with the in-lu vehicle license fees. I'm only taking 99% just in case, you know, there's slightly appeals, you know, when property owners appeal the value of their properties or when property owners can't pay their property taxes. So I like to kind of bring it down a little bit. On sales tax revenues, HDL also is our consultant, they've only provided next year's budget or revenues, I'm only taking 98% of that total, just in case because of, we have the inflation coming, or the inflation is here. But I always try to be more conservative on the revenue side. And then on the following years, I'm only projecting a flat 2% on the sales tax revenues. On the expenditure side, just to give you an idea of what was used, there are no employee COLAs on there. I don't like to project for that or estimate for that, as we don't know what it is or if there will be any. So I like to keep it zero and then just come back to council once an agreement has been made with the bargaining group. And then our general liability, insurance, all risk premiums are increasing every year. So I like, I factored in 5% each of the five years. Additionally, our health premiums, such as, you know, medical, dental, and vision, at 7% each year. Our personal lump sum, this number I took from our actuarial valuation, our most recent one that was done on July 2021. So these are the increases we're looking at for the lump sum payments that we make to CalPERS each July. And then the sheriff's contract, we're fortunate that it's only increasing by 1.45% next year. However, I always factor 5% as that's, that has been their average increase each year, so I factored 5%. And then again, workers' comp compensation premium increase, I'm factoring a 5% for the next four years. Yes.
Very good question. Actually, I forgot to ask last, the first lump sum, actually, it's decreasing, shouldn't that be increasing?
It's decreasing because they're trying to, what the lump sum payment does is tries to pay off our liability. is tries, tries to pay off our liability, I believe it's in thirty years, so, and we're making more payments as we go. So the rates, our rates, so there's two, two pieces to CalPERS. It's the rate the employer pays, and then there's the lump sum paid to try to catch up to our liabilities.
So, so who determines, how did you come up with the ninety-eight based on what PERS gave you?
Yes.
Fifty-nine, sixty-two.
CalPERS provided the, in their report, they have a projection.
They have a projection.
Yes. So this could change, as they do each year. They do evaluation each year. So it could potentially change depending on the interest or what they call discount points, them, how much money they make, how much benefits we provide to staff, if that changes. But, so this is the latest report that they've provided for us.
What that's reflecting is the growth factor is decreasing. Our costs are still going up each year, but the, the factor of the growth is, is, is decreasing at a slightly slower pace, but it doesn't mean we're paying less going forward. We're still paying more going forward. What that, what that row reflects is the annual increase from the base prior. So I don't want to, just so that, yeah, well, I understand that you see a different number going down. It's going up from that prior base.
If, for, for every reason we indeed will hit recession in the coming years, do you expect PERS to ask us to contribute more?
It's a great question. As our, as our admin services director has spoken about prior, they, there are, they don't use the word smoothing technique anymore, but they have gone through a longer actuarial period to capture some of those costs. So yes, there is a risk, but we will not see it immediately. We will see it over a course of years, rather than big spikes that back in the early two thousands and the prior recessions before, where agencies would see essentially when the times were good, they were paying very little, and when the times are bad, they got slammed. This, this kind of reflects that approach. So yeah, you could see that number in twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-six, twenty-seven start to really creep up, depending on what we've just seen in the stock market. And the PERS actuarial numbers are through our same fiscal year. So whatever their losses are in their overall portfolio, their actual, the actuarials, evaluation of assets for that year sets on July first. So everybody's seeing what's happened with the stock market, all the asset classes right now. You have to assume that CalPERS's portfolio has gone down. So yes, that will kind of reset that going forward. But because of the new approach that, that, remember, if you remember about four or five years ago, we had some really sharp increases. And that was to kind of reset that for CalPERS's agencies and their unfunded liability, so you wouldn't see these kind of jarring up and down spikes, more gradual up and then gradual down.
Thanks.
So any other questions on the assumptions? So this next graph, based on those assumptions, is showing that our surplus is increasing the next five years. So this, next year, we're looking, as you see the bottom, it's four hundred and eighty-two thousand is our surplus, which I had spoken earlier about. And so in the fifth year, we're looking at a one-point-three million dollar, one million three hundred seventy, one thousand dollar surplus. And you can see on the graph our revenue, the gap between revenue and expenditure is That doesn't really account for the inflation that we're looking at, so I feel confident we can weather the storm per se, should the, the inflation continue to increase. So what are the futures of the general fund? As we mentioned, the CalPERS unfunded liabilities, the O P E, which is our health benefits to our retirees, those are rising quicker than our CalPERS unfunded liabilities. Our negotiations with our employee bargaining unit, that has not been factored into that. Increasing costs of possibly our contract services as they become expired or due for either an R F P or renewal. And as I mentioned, inflation rates, they're continuing longer than expected, so that's something that staff will need to monitor. And then also additionally, costs are being affected by the supply shortages. We had, I had come to you, for example, to replace our servers in our, our I T room, we're looking at July or August for those servers to come in because of the shortage. And then, most importantly, the utility and fuel prices, as you know, the fuel prices continue to shoot up, I believe they're double the amount of what it was last year, I believe. So they're over six dollars, almost seven dollars a gallon. So we'll also have to look at that, possibly as our leases come up, maybe we may look at, you know, E V or hybrids, more hybrids, to help us curtail the, the cost in the fuel. Now, for the city, briefly on the citywide budgets, as you can see, the general fund is up there. We do have what we call special revenue funds that are restricted for certain uses, such as a Proposition A, Proposition C, those are Measure R, Measure W, those type of funds. As you can see, the revenues for those are, are six million, eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. However, the expenditures are almost nine and a half million dollars, which is a net of two-point-five, two-point-six million dollars. Now, this is, is not balanced, however, we're using fund balances from those different funds as we mainly budget for the C I P. So they're carrying fund balances to be able to absorb the two-point-five deficit. And then, of course, successor agency, which I believe will end in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-four, twenty-five, our last payment for the bond payment will, will be finished, and the bonds will be de-faced, and we will no longer need to have a successor agency.
Which is sound, right.
On the capital improvement program side, this is where we use a lot of the special revenue funds. As you can see, the one fund that is not considered special revenue are deposits that we collect from the contractors, and we're using about seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of that for our safe, clean water program. In addition to the safe, clean water program, we're also using Measure W of about eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And then we've got the lighting and landscape district funds that we're hoping to continue replacing our, the bulbs or our lampposts with L E D lights, or bulbs. And then we just have a seventy-five thousand dollar Rosebean Boulevard irrigation, median irrigation. And then everything else is mainly the pavement management, street resurfacing that we're budgeting for next year, which is really more of a carryover from the, I believe you approved this year, just recently, today, tonight. So these are the budgets that will be going forward to fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. So you're looking at about five-point-nine millions of C I P, but we are budgeting about nine, so five-point-nine million of the nine-point-four million is C I P here. So of the C I P, just, you know, a pie chart showing you how the funds are being used. It's almost equal, as you can see the slices. The largest piece would be the Road Maintenance and Repair Act at one-point-three million dollars, which is twenty-two-point-seven percent of the total budget. So in conclusion, the whole proposed fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget, again, maintains our service levels. We have a balanced budget for the general fund. We are rescheduling parks and recreation programs for the community. We have our beautiful Primrose Park and its maintenance included in the budget. And then lastly, we're continuing to pave our, our streets or resurfacing our pavements. So the recommended actions for tonight is, is again, open the public hearing, receive input, close the public hearing, provide direction on additions or deletions to the proposed budget, approve resolution twenty-two fifty-six oh four, and then review and approve the updates to the general fund reserve classification.
Are there any last comments or questions? We need to open the public hearing.
Mayor, can I ask, ask one quick question? The Measure W money, just as a follow-up to what I asked at the last budget study session, I know in the C I P lists, it, we, we call it the El Monte Project. Just sort of conceptually, I'm, can, can you share at least, what does that mean on a conceptual level? Because it's Measure W related to water, but we're proposing it on a street.
Sure, if you don't mind, I can, I can take that. Generally, what we're talking about is the stormwater filtration systems in, on, on the streets. So want to see if we can kind of utilize some of, maybe some future, and we would come back to the standing committee first, talk about some, you know, road repavement projects with some filtration, similar to what you see north of, on Rosebean, north of Huntington in the county area, some of those types of filtration projects that are not necessarily dry wells, maybe, because they're pretty expensive, but some of those types of projects, maybe some water retention basins that make some sense with some pavement projects as well. So really looking to, as we, as we, as we've talked about, but we have been collecting that money for a while, so we want to look to see how we can leverage that with some, maybe some pavement projects, and actually maybe some sidewalk repairs as well. We actually did a big sidewalk project this past weekend on Broadway, and seeing how we can utilize that as well.
Yeah, thank, thank you. I, I asked because in the past, we've used Measure W more for, I guess, repair of the gutters and the drains and
Exactly.
And other kind of stormwater control type of measures. So, but here, it's, it's a pretty substantial amount we're putting in a, in a, in a street project, basically.
Right. And we're, and we're trying to look, look, to see if we can make that impactful project because we do have an obligation, as well as an agency, to try to get as much of the stormwater percolated back into, into the ground as well. And for, quite frankly, for most of our streets, it's curb and gutter and, and asphalt that's not doing that. We're going to try to see what we can do with some projects in the next, you know, twelve months or so to see if that can work. But we'll be talking to you about that more, some more. But some of those, those are some of the techniques we're thinking about.
Brian, if you could possibly reach out to the upper district, the upper district gave South Pasadena five hundred thousand dollars to work on some creative projects that can help with the sores and the water draining into it. So if you could get that information, maybe we could apply for something also.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else, Juan?
And Mayor, just one other question. Director Paragis, you mentioned Primrose Park's maintenance is included in the budget. Do we just know roughly how much that is moving forward?
What I did in working with Adam Matsumoto, the director, we figured out the cost for the Temple City Park, or, or the size of the Temple City Park versus the Primrose Park. So basically, it's about a quarter, I believe, of the size. Primrose Park is about a quarter of the Temple City Park, and so I took a quarter of the cost of Temple City Park and budgeted that for Primrose Park, for water, or, water, electricity, and a little bit of the E V chargers. We'll, we'll come, be coming back to you about the E V chargers, and we're, we have an, we're trying to, we'll be proposing applying a cost to charge. Right now, it's free for users. At the, the Primrose Park, the four charging units are free right now.
Are they all working?
They're all working now, yes. So
Are those superchargers?
No. I believe they're level twos.
For hours to charge it up.
Level-two chargers, so.
Takes a long time, if you want to get a full charge. Superchargers are the ones that will do it like right away.
Then come to my house, we'll give you a rate.
I don't have an electric power. I might soon.
So we're going to analyze the cost of electricity at the park and the usage of the E V chargers and get the kilowatt numbers and the rate, and we'll determine what it costs the city, and we'll have to come back to you and see if you'll approve to pass that cost on to the users.
Thanks.
Okay, we need to open the public hearing. Close public hearing. Any final questions or comments? Seeing none, can we get a council motion?
Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-two dash five-six-zero four, adopting the budget and approving appropriations for the city of Temple City for the fiscal year commencing July first, twenty twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and amend as necessary.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, any objections? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Move to our update from our city manager.
Mayor Sternquist, considering the hour, I'll be brief, but for anybody, any members of the public who are asking for public work requests right now, we are, we've been struggling with a few COVID issues in public works right now, thanks to our colleagues in parks maintenance and our tree crew as well, who've been helping us fill in. But we are taking care of the major issues, trash, other things, but if there was a pothole repair that you asked about a week ago, it may take a few more days or so to get to it. So, but if you have any complaints or there's any issues, just please let me know. And, but we're, as, as we've been going through with COVID, I, I can't commend our team enough for really acting like a team during COVID and filling in, all of our employees doing all that they can to work together. To steal the former mayor's state of the city speech, we are a small and mighty engine that works really hard. So all the credit to them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, update from our city attorney.
I'll be even more brief. My best to the council and to the public for a very happy Fourth of July, and a reminder that I will be out of town for your meeting on the fifth, so my associate Stephanie Gutiérrez will be sitting with you that evening. I know she'll do a much better job than I. Thank you all very much.
Okay, let's see. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings, do we have any?
I don't have a report, but I was just wondering, I guess, I take it we never were successful in getting a standing committee meeting with the school district? Because I think we requested that about a month ago.
We haven't got any feedback yet, sir.
We've asked, but they haven't responded? Is that the problem?
Alf, I will follow up once again.
Well, you know, I, I don't, not going to hold my breath since they're out of school and things seem to stop once school is out over there, but it would have been nice to have gotten a meeting since it's been quite a while, and I guess all we can do is try, so appreciate the effort.
Welcome, sir.
Council item separate from the city manager's regular agenda? None? All right, any additional public comments? Don't see any.
Steve's getting up.
We have one.
Mayor, Mayor Sternquist, Mayor Pro Temper Man, council members, city staff. There's been a role awakening the last two or three years at Live Oak and Baldwin. We've had fatal traffic accidents there. Seems like every week, there's an accident there, and it's usually two or three cars or four cars. It's a very dangerous situation. They need to put, one, some left turn arrows there, two, redo the street so it lines up. The accidents there are so frequent, it's just, it's a dangerous situation. I know part of that intersection is in Arcadia. I'd like to see the two cities get together and basically do something about this situation. It's been going on a long time. The accidents have only increased. The accidents have only increased and gotten worse and the injuries have gotten worse. I know four months ago, a car ended up inside a residence there at Baldwin and Live Oak. But a year and a half ago, two years ago, there was somebody killed at the intersection. So it's not getting better, it's getting worse. I'd just like to appeal for you guys to figure out how to deal with this and make it better. Thank you.
You know, before we adjourn, I do want to mention two things. One is, I know on our, there was a press release that Tenny sent out today regarding illegal fireworks. And I believe it's on our website also. I would encourage people to go on to the website and read that. There's also a letter from Los Angeles County Supervisors regarding the use of illegal fireworks and penalties that will be imposed. The Foothill Cities, of course, are very concerned. And Brian, I haven't, I don't recall looking, did we put out our banner?
No, we have not yet. That will, that should go out shortly.
Okay, so if we can make sure that that goes out. And Brian, do we have any, are we doing some increased patrols or?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, so just want to let our residents know that we take this very seriously and we support our sheriff's department. So we will have increased patrols on the Fourth of July. And I know there's always, you know, four or five days before illegal fireworks going off. So we're not going to wait till July the 4th, right, Brian? We're going to enforce those if we, people can call in and call into the sheriff's department. So, and there was a first case of West Nile virus in the San Gavio Valley reported last week and it was in the city of South Pasadena, I believe. So just be vigilant about dumping your water out and not leaving standing water.
We have to worry about that now, too?
You do. I would like to adjourn our meeting tonight in memory of the two El Monte police officers, Michael Peredes and Joseph Santana. And we are adjourned.